Like to welcome the members in the audience and those watching. Today, we recognize the initiative that helps Shani and the auto wanderer as the customary leaders and defenders of the great general island with waters and its lands. We honor their long history and want to be noticed this beautiful territory are being used to uphold enough with their voices and values as a host nation. As tomorrow is Remembrance Day, tonight we pause to honor the men and women who have served and continue to serve our country with dedication and selflessness. Remembrance Day is more than a date on a calendar. It is a solid reminder of the freedoms we enjoy because of those who were willing to sacrifice everything. From the muddy trenches of Europe to the peacekeeping missions around the world, Canadians have stood up for justice, democracy, and humanity. To our local veterans, including those from Legion Branch 153, we thank you for your service, your strength, and your example. You remind us that citizenship comes with both privilege and responsibility. It is also not free. As a community, we must continue to ensure that future generations understand the true meaning of November 11. Not a war story, but a story of peace, a story of honor, and a story of remembrance. On behalf of Town Council and the residents of the town of Tilsenberg, I wish to extend our deepest gratitude to all veterans and those that continue to serve. We will remember them. We'll just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Now, we will, I will turn it over to Councilwoman Parsons.
Do worship move by Parsons, second by Councilor Lucy Ann. The council reconvenes all the sudden at six o'clock P M. Reports the following, it's from the meeting post or the panel. The council provided direction to staff regarding a personnel matter update and the council received report E P M C L D point five four P titled right of first refusal, the integral lands and provided direction to staff.
Any comments from council? Those in favor? Harry, down to this Danny.
Move by myself, second by Councilor Parker. Does the agenda ask, prepare for the council meeting in November 10, 2025, be approved, follow amendment? Agenda item 10.1. Or then all, uh, delegation be double, follow the agenda item nine point one, drive, approval extended, this is twenty dash six.
Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Harry, disclosures that the carry a test? Adoption, council minutes, council partner?
Move by myself, second by Councilor Rose, the minutes of the council meeting about February twenty seven, twenty twenty five, be agreed.
Eric's remarks. All those in favor? Eric. Next, we move to public meetings. Councilor Rose.
Thank you. Move by myself, second by County President, there's a copy of the degree of adjustment. The year applications for monitoring there in that six whole four two. Thank you.
All those in favor? Here. Next, we move to item eight point one, monitor variance application. This is a public meeting held under the planning act for the purpose of hearing monitor variance application A zero four dash two five. This process allows any person in attendance the opportunity to make a presentation to committee of adjustment. I will turn it over to our planner, Amy Hartley, who will give an overview of the application.
So the purpose of this variance application is to reduce the minimum required lot area, or corner lot, from five hundred and fifty five meters squared to four hundred and ninety six meters squared. This under parcel was recently approved with consent operation being come forward down to where we have seven. However, the approved lot area by the management committee was incorrect, and so they are confirmed on the practical areas subject to this variance application. The intent of that case is to council the property will be severed and severed from the church. Staff are satisfied that the lottery of course is still adequate to serve the existing filing. Is it keeping up the character of the monitoring? It's not as difficult to have others in fact when the major happens. Is my desirable and human representative and and that is only by law. Yeah, we should can be considered lawful, making.
Thank you, Amy. Does council have any questions or committee members finding questions? Seeing none. Is there anyone present in person or virtually that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Is there anyone present in person or virtually that would like to speak in opposition of the application? Any further questions from committee members? Councilor Spencer.
Move by myself, second by Deputy Mayor Barris, that the committee of adjustment through application A zero four dash two five submitted by Saint Andrews Presbyterian Church for lands described as lots B seven seven dash B seven B and part lot E seven six, plan five hundred, being part one. Plan four one R dash zero one zero seven five, when instantly known as forty six Brock Street in the town of Tilsenberg, as it relates to where we from section twelve point two, E C zone provisions, table twelve point two A, zone provisions, lot area minimum to reduce the minimum, minimum required lot area for a quarter lot from five hundred and fifty five square meters to four hundred and ninety six point three to the parcel has to be severed, uh, that has been granted provisional consent, be two four dash four zero dash seven from the Oxford County Land Division Committee.
Any further comments from committee members? All those in favor? Here. Next, we move to item eight point two, uh, Goodwill Industries, seven, nine, seven, three. This is a public meeting held under the planning act for the purpose of hearing the monitor variance application A zero five dash two five. This process allows any person in attendance the opportunity to make a presentation to the committee of adjustment. The planner, Amy Hartley, will begin with an overview of the application.
As a part of this variance application is to extend a legal on on the interior side yard width of board cut five meters to nine meters, which is the required for interior side lot, it's been a lot of residential zone. The bill is proposing in addition onto these two stores to provide accessible washrooms, where most space alone dot and staff lockers cases. At the use of the land, that continues to be used for commercial purposes and firms with his own, the requested variance is being under section forty five one of the section forty one, is the committee of adjustment to grant an extension to the legal on. Staff are satisfied because the post review is desirable and necessary for the development of ones. It will continue as the same initial use, and additionally, the south wall of the building to be extended up as a button, all howling and started immediately by the um residential lease. As second application what we require and do tell the assembly, we review the staff. And start the argument with what the application, so I have ten questions.
Thank you. Does committee have any questions for the banner? Seeing none. Is there anyone present in person or virtually that would like to speak in favor of the application? Welcome. On four, please. You could just state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Serena, and I'm getting a present ability. Um, the main purpose of this addition is to address several corporations and have accessible experiences. But the current at present, there is no accessible washrooms, focus rooms, or stuff. And the existing offices and much so are located in massive, it is not my system. The building also lacks proper loading dock, which limits safe and efficient material. With this addition, we are testing accessibility, seeking issues which we have, and also expand the retail network in here, which will improve operation efficiency and benefit the local company. It is expected to clean, quite didn't part time, uh, jobs contribute to the local area. Thank you for your representation. I would be happy to answer.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for the representative? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing no one. Is there anyone present in person or virtually that would like to speak in opposition of the application? Seeing anyone? Any further questions from the committee? Deputy Mayor.
Move by myself, second by Councilor Parsons, that the committee of adjustment approved application file A zero five dash two five submitted by Goodwill Industries of Karia Great Lakes. For lands described as lot one three six eight dash one three seven one, plan five hundred, John Tilsenberg, as it relates to um pursuant to section forty five, section one of the planning act, really from section fourteen point two S C zone provisions, table fourteen point two, S C zone provisions, interior side yard minimum width to extend a legal nonconforming interior side yard with four point five meters, whereas nine meters is required for interior side lot line a body, a residential zone.
Further comments from committee? All those in favor? Council partner?
Yes, move by Parsons, second by County Lieutenant, the council moved out of the committee of adjustment and move back to the regular council session at six eleven fifteen.
All those in, all those in favor? Harry. Next, we move to a planning report, request for extension draft approved, uh, planner subdivision. S B twenty zero six dash zero seven. And um, Amy will turn it over to you for any comments.
Thank you. Uh, so yeah, since the subject separation, um, is to an extension to the draft approval. The front draft approval is set to lapse February twenty twenty six. The act did initially run three years, however, it's customarily made to their extension. They are going to maintain um evaluation of the wire and its capacity and to ensure family towards final registration. So as such, staff are looking to your approval um to February twenty twenty.
Does council have any questions? How the planner or during the report? Councilor M C N?
Move by myself, second by Councilor Parker. That council advised Oxford County that the town support a two-year extension of ground approval for a plan of some of the business committed by Sunside Land Chartered Limited. For lands described as part of lot eight, concession of eleven boroughs, being part one, reference plan in forty one R seven hundred by seven, and it goes to the February tenth, twenty twenty eight, to grant additional time to satisfy the conditions to draft plan approval to register the remaining fees of the draft plan subdivision.
Thank you, counselor. Any other comments? Those in favor? Here. Next, we need the item ten point one, um, and we invite Lori Van Oostel, who is speaking as a delegate this evening, and she's speaking the item nine point two, if those are ready. Welcome. Thank you.
Before I start with my prepared comments, I just want to thank you, mayor, councilors, and staff for the work you do. You make consequential decisions that will impact the town of Tilsenberg forever or citizens forever. And these, these decisions I know you don't take lightly. And when you have a big decision before you, like the one you're about to make, I want to make sure that you have all the information to make the best possible decision. My name is Lori Van Oostel. I think most of you know me. Uh, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of a number of neighbors that are both here and maybe watching online uh, about the proposed official plan and zoning by law amendments for thirty one Wall Street. I understand the town hopes to use all or part of the proceeds from the sale of this municipally owned property to help fund the town hall as referenced in the report before you. I happen to notice that. My hand, see this is attachment. Uh, I respect that goal. In fact, we all do. We want to see us, our community facilities improved, but I truly believe there's a better path forward, one that reflects good planning, public safety, and the town's own parks and rec master plan. As the former provincial chair of the Fleet Safety Council, I'm alarmed by the traffic study. It underestimated traffic volumes, ignored cumulative development in the area, and even admitted that the Cedar Simcoe intersection already operates at a service F. Starts at A, F is to the bottom, the failure, yet it still recommends no upgrades. Those of us who live here experience the consequences daily. Drivers turning left from Cedar onto Simcoe have to edge out into the traffic to see past uh, the cars that are parked there and the signs that are often there uh, in that parking lot, forcing downhill traffic to break hard or swerve. This happens all the time. It's a blind corner and a well-known one. Councilor Parker, you even mentioned it that you've seen it and you avoid that intersection because of that. I personally watched countless near misses, and a friend of mine was up from Michigan last weekend, and she said, someone's gonna get killed here. We can't let that happen. Beyond vehicles, the, the traffic study never addressed pedestrian or school road safety. There's no sidewalks, no curbs on Cedar, Earl, or Heim streets, and very limited street lighting. There are currently no sidewalks for school bus pickup, so children are forced to be picked up directly in the existing driveway on Earl Street. Uh, families push strollers, residents walk dogs directly along the edge of the roadway or on the roadway itself. If this proposal proceeds, those same residents will face increased traffic with no safe separation. It's a recipe for disaster. We hope that any development in this area will include upgrades to the roadways, sidewalks, curves, and lighting, which are desperately needed and were promised by town staff during the initial consultation at the library while a seven-story building was proposed. We were all there. We're curious, who will be responsible for these costs? And when these upgrades would actually occur? Council and public deserve clarity. Will the town be providing sidewalks and curved roadways along Cedar, Earl, and Heim as part of this proposal to ensure public safety? And if so, who's paying for the work? The developer? Oxford County? Or the town taxpayer? Is it in the budget? Uh, this property is one of the few remaining town-owned green spaces in Tilsenberg. It sits beside a small playground, a tiny playground, and a wooded environmental protection lot. Together, they present a rare opportunity to create a continuously connected park corridor. Instead, disposing of it, the town could expand the existing park and link the woodlot to the trail network, achieving the official plan's goal of connecting parks and natural areas. The twenty twenty four Parks and Rec Master Plan states that the town could prioritize the acquisition and development of new parkland in established neighborhoods where opportunities are limited. This site perfectly fits that description. None of you have considered them. Well, two point one of the plan says every resident should be within a five-minute walk of a neighborhood park. Expanding the park here, including a twenty-five to thirty-meter wide walkway corridor, would help achieve that goal and provide much-needed recreational space for both families. Retaining the park corridor would also allow the town to preserve and maintain the existing school sewer that already runs adjacent to the woodlot on town-owned lands. By keeping this area in public ownership and under passive open space O two O S two zoning, the town avoids costly future relocations or easement complications while ensuring that drainage infrastructure remains fully accessible for inspection and maintenance. So here comes the requests. Our requests are to direct staff to retain and zone the expanded play area, including a twenty-five to thirty-meter walkway corridor as active open space O S two. This will enlarge the existing park, provide a safe trail running between Cedar Street and Tilsen and Tilsen Street, and ensure the area remains accessible for recreation and active transportation. Secondly, zone the existing woodlot as O S two, that's passive open space under municipal ownership. Don't need to sell that. If you can't build on it anyway, you might as well keep it. This will permanently protect the woodlots' ecological features, ensuring ongoing municipal stewardship and expand the town's environmental protection network as identified in the Park and Rec Master Plan. Third, integrate and combine O S one and O S two designations into the town's active parkland inventory. Doing so will help meet the parkland service level targets, enhance tree canopy coverage, and align with the town's parks and reps and climate action objectives. With that, confirm that the park corridor will preserve the existing townstone sewer infrastructure adjacent to the woodlot. Keeping this corridor in town ownership prevents future conflicts with private development, avoiding possible relocations, and ensures the sewer can be safely accessed for inspection and maintenance. Clarify the scope and funding. This is the thing that drove me here in the first place. Clarify the scope and funding responsibility, all roadway safety upgrades. This was the concern when I first saw this. You're going to have to upgrade the infrastructure in order to support something on like what you had envisioned on that site. That's going to be costly. Council should require staff to identify when and how sidewalks, curbs, and lighting will be installed on Cedar, Earl, and Heim streets and confirm whether these costs will be borne by the developer, Oxford County, or the town. And we need to have some transparency on them. And lastly, we ask that you have a recorded vote on all future decisions relating to this property. This ensures accountability, transparency for the residents and transparency for the residents on how each member voted on the disposition the sale of public green space. Thank you all.
Thank you. Does council have any questions?
Did I drop a bomb in here?
Um, I will, um, you mentioned C F S a couple of times, and maybe you can clarify a couple of things. One was the money for the town hall, um, which I don't believe this is generating profits for the town hall. Um, and then this is not for sale? Sorry, can you, sorry, do you have any second questions? Is the woodlot for sale or not for sale? The woodlot?
Uh, to be determined, I guess, mayor. Um, the right now it is that it is a part of the block, so we often do sell woodlot with lots that are next to it. So when that woodlot is protected, so in that regard, there's no change really in terms of unless you want to retain public ownership, of course, there is no change in function of that woodlot, it can be asserted, it would not not be changed out. If council sold it, they could certainly correct that woodlot could not be sold with the property, but uh, at this point, it's still a big term. And then the first question was the town hall. I think in general, uh, we're looking at all options to fund the town hall, so surplus land is generally going to be dedicated or new town hall. I'm sorry, to clarify further, there is a nuance to that, I guess. I mean, it's kind of mayor, and the nuance is that um, because the county provides capital funds for, uh, not, I guess, social housing, if you roll affordable or tangible housing. The recommendation that, as I recall it from the sort of, that we match uh, the county's contribution uh, toward any affordable or indoor housing. Of course, that's something to find comfortable, but if that ever happened, that would be a net reduction in any sale value. So it means we sold the land for this much, and we give them a credit because we're building affordable people housing. That would be less, perhaps no funds received by the town would make all that.
Right. That's hard to remember, it's all. We heard of the, so. Councilor Spencer?
Uh, to the chair, more comment, so it kind of the same sort of thing about, maybe this goes to the director, Herc's, right? Is that, I tried to look in the notes, and didn't find it. Um, so I apologize, and it's in there. Is that furk being removed if this um, happens?
Madam Mayor, I don't think so.
Okay.
The development commission, I should have said as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for your turn.
Thank you for the questions, twenty thousand. We love to thank you for coming here this evening. Councilor Rose. Ten point one. Page seven.
Move by myself, second by County President, the council is seeking elevation to Lori Van Oostel. Regarding Dr. Montreal, the
Further comments from council? Those in favor? Harry. Next, we move to item nine point two. And I'm going to turn the floor over, so this was council's direction, or we sent it back um, to get some questions answered regarding the safety of the intersection and some other questions. I'll turn it over to you, Amy. Give some comments to the board.
So this is a some manner of report from a different application uh, or referred by council on October twenty and is to guard to address all the concerns of additional information for traffic. So I'll begin with addressing some of the concerns related to the local density. Uh, the overall net density is proposed at maybe seventy minutes per hour. The density being proposed is to ensure that the existing block is protected rather than removing some of those lands for the mountain, which does have an impact on the total lot area and developable area of the site. Um, so that is a positive when it comes to the density. And further, the proposed density will maximize and um, liberalize the developable area and body as many as possible. So it is noted that um, the building will ultimately utilize some market-based rents and affordable housing. This will come to play um, once a work as for proposals is sent out, and our big process is undertaken with the county and passed down assistance proposals as noted. Each proposal is evaluated based on affordability, number of affordable units, and overall nature of those proposal on the units. Um, staff rank those and evaluate them, and then ultimately make a decision and award the patent. Any commitments from the rapporteurs are secured through an agreement with the county, uh, to ensure that those four units are provided for a certain period of time. Um, there are some questions about calling some medium density development, whereas it the numbers may get a high density development. Call it a medium density development as the building is self-isual program, so to mean low stories. Looks low density with the amount of units, we said a low density. And then further, this is the items because of the lot area and maintaining the thought as well as the wrong operating. So we got interesting questions about density. Uh, with respect to the traffic, well, the town engineering staff and town's engineering consultant for transportation last did provide additional counties and verifications. The email from traffic consultant wasn't penned to the word to, um, to see their comments. Clearly, but I have some answers for you. So just note that that accounts for a bit of the other, I think, there's a tree of seed and some bulbs. Behind is incorrect. Traffic levels of service are very low on a scale of eighty tab. F is the grade to that means the intersection was given, but governance is still unacceptable level of service from design to living capacity, the penalty is to the body is an intersection. Transportation consultant noted that the left-hand lane at Simcoe and Cedar is currently operating at a delay of sixty nine seconds per vehicle at the P M. The far faster growth to twenty thirty two will result in a delay of hundred tens of minutes of review. The current volume making a left turn in the P M peak onto Santa is the eighteen whereas the forecast of this calendar war, this is in addition to six hours in the left turn. Further, the consultant adds the forecast of the babysitter due to proposed development. This apparently did point an eleven percent increase on traffic on St. Andrew's Street, not from St. Andrew's Street. At the previous council meeting, there were questions relating to the expansion.
Council that the town supports the application to amend the official plan file number. Okay, twenty four dash zero two dash seven submitted by the town of Tolsberg to men's legally described as last twenty five and twenty six. And part of Willow Street Plan nine nine sixty six in the town of Tolsberg to facilitate the development of four story forty seven unit, the apartment building. Please okay plans and council approved in principle was don't change application filed Z N. Seven twenty four dash zero one submitted by the town of Tolsberg for men's legally described as last twenty five twenty six. And part of Willow Street Plan nine six six in the town of Tolsberg to read on the lens to special meeting and a city residential to facilitate a full story forty seven unit apartment building with reduced fire area. Bird lung unit. Like sweet drop uh. Go ahead. So this is, I I understand the neighborhoods um concerns um. There really, this is something that the affordable and attainable housing committee has looked at for a number of years now. We've looked at a number of different locations, a number of different um areas to release the need to build. Um it's uh it's tough to see some of the nimbyism that has happened in this area. Um I do, although I do genuinely share some of the concerns, I do think that we need to have a plan if we're only move forward for that intersection with Cedar and Simpo Street. There needs to be information come back from um the. People that do the traffic study or even the traffic committee would often add that intersection. I don't think the stoplight is necessarily we. The best thing for that area, but there does need to be some mitigation regardless of this development happens, I think we need to look at that. Um I do feel very strongly about this um application because I I do think that um before more than table. That housing trip has looked at all of the options we've had that were to us on town. So I um I hope that uh the rest of the councillors have the opportunity to look at it. I know we've all heard comments and everything like that. But uh this is an opportunity that a number of us uh made comment about during the previous election that affordable housing was something that we wanted to. Look at and support and this is an opportunity to at least add some more units into the housing bulk. It may not be anything to solve the full affordable housing crisis, but it at least brings options to the community. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
For our comments from other councilors. I would, I would just like to say this is not. Like affordable, there's only. A hand work for me, so we can not do this developments. Tenable, I don't know. I don't even know if that is even possible anymore, but they're called to.
Yeah, the mayor, this is a rental type project. Uh Harry Fox, this is how we as in earth in this area. Generally try to get about ten percent of the units says that affordable attainable is that uh gap above the average, I guess, for the market. What the actual market rates are, so we hope to get um some affordable and some attainable. Um the one thing we're ever get, as you know, we've got an expression of interest on is affordable ownership. And I think we're a little bit more excited about that option as well. So we'll see if we can get more units out, maybe they are affordable. Um that's what we're here.
Yeah, I think this might be like even a um a unique product project and offer to go home ownership. And it still has a target range of on point the um, you know, robust salary. Um that, you know, that's what this is, this unit was targeting. We have a new um long term care home opening in Tolsberg and. One of the targets like for a building like this would be like for PSW use that. Um you know, work or didn't work with that anymore. Let's go to avoid a lot of people. So we need housing for um, you know, people like PSW's. So this is really what it's intended for. Um all right, is council satisfied with everything? Like I still like to have some assurance um. I know that things have changed in the provincial policy statement, but is there any way that being um. When the cycling process takes place, that there is something that comes back to this council regarding the streetlights and the cell blocks? Would we need like lead an amendment maybe or something like I just want to ensure that we thought our feet on the loose.
To you, my mayor. I mean, or correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the opinion is that imagine the video so from the normal group of the process um. I will. Sure you have the odds that you have to consider the shame and definitely we thought for this task. Ends to have to be appropriate or document that is why I see this sad thing the organization that we are we process um. And that would be a population process.
There's a part, yeah. Through you, what I'm here to listen to, but Amy, so it's not a public process, but the opportunity for it to come back that our council. That bill.
Yes, uh through you. Um it can be hard access information um. To like to cancel, you know, but also these um. But like I said, I think we will need to have a little bit of me comments and send that to the staff. So that will be some.
Okay, so council, essentially no, for I thought that one under the name. I'm doing a little bit of pointy note, but thought that that um. Power listing with my council, so but it can come back as those who we should at least, you're taking our compliments. About the. All right, any further comments from council? Although some change. Most carried. Next we move to item ten point two skyline energy and we will not move that that in.
Hey, councillors, members, thank you for having us here today and thank you for for having us. I have to clarify our ask from the last thing, not October fourteen. Uh my name is Matt Henry. We're a poll cast them today to talk about the proposed battery energy storage system at five hundred highway three here in Tolsen Bergen. Um because I've been to the presentation before, I'll give a quick recap on uh on sort of who we are and what steps we've taken from the last meeting. Um and I really wanted to clarify what the ask is here today is. We are seeking municipal support resolution and we're staff to receive uh the information uh going forward so they can. Uh to to council. So um we, the proponent for this is Skyline Energy Fund, part of Skyline Group Companies. Been experienced developer with large portfolio of sustainable infrastructure assets as well as a real estate portfolio. We have a number of apartment buildings. And solar systems located in here in Tolsenburg. Um today we're here to talk about a thirty megawatt battery energy storage system uh being developed in response to the I E S O's long term to procurement. Which is seeking to add energy and capacity resources to the grid to meet Ontario's growing demand. Um essentially what this means is we'll we use the excess power at night, charge the batteries at nighttime. Invert back onto the grid at periods of high demand and high consumption to help with things like rolling uh rolling brownouts, grid stability. Um and really keep that bits of reliable forever. Um as I mentioned, the development will be built at five hundred highway three uh property designated industrial under the official plan. Uh in zone H G for general industrial. Uh it is setback, as you can see here in the picture, from the natural heritage features associated with the ravine there on the right side of the picture. Uh on the next slide there, uh the progress since the October fourth fourteen meeting is we've developed a more site specific layout. And a draft single line uh electrical drawing. We've commissioned a preliminary acoustic assessment from an engineering firm. Uh we've continued uh our our meeting, including including speaking with the uh fire prevention officer. Uh here in Tilsenberg. Um and also we've advanced our discussions with the uh Six Nations of Grand River as their potential in uh individual partner on this project. Terms of the site layout uh on the next slide, as you can see there, so it's it's been. Um it's shrunk since our last meeting there, a little bit more compact, only uses part of the area previously identified for development. Uh it's still compliant where it is there, setback from any natural heritage features. And it's uh accessible. Uh it uses existing entrances from Noel Road and Highway three. Uh the look uh next slide there, so just so what what an actual project this looks like. Um essentially, these are forty foot uh shipping containers. Um we've wore pads, the roads around that. Um but these, it's it's a very quiet site. It uh there's no light. Pushing on these sites, essentially the noise you can hear from it is the HVACs running. Um and then actually on the next slide, I'll go into some of the analysis as well. So we engaged S L R consulting. Um which assess the sound levels at sensitive receptors, so homes and vacant residential lots in the area. Um using the standard for class two suburban environments. We concluded that the predicted project sat in levels meet the applicable guidelines limits and we am received publication. So. Uh the project is predicted to be technically feasible from a noise uh noise perspective. And and how we how we look at that is it is. Basically at a second story bedroom window is forty decibels is is that, which is essentially the sound of a library. So that's sort of the standard that we're being built to for a project like this. Um the full report has been shared with the town. Uh and acoustic analysis will be updated as the design is finalized to ensure that the project remains. Compatible with all residential neighbors. Reminder, just to the next of the site is the uh the waste waste facility there. So it is in that industrial zone. And it's a back for the residential houses. Um in addition to that, uh we've done some additional engagement, delivered a comprehensive project report to us that which includes details about. Um who who the proponent is, uh the long term process for this uh long term procurement, our development process, the project. The community community benefits being one thousand dollars per year per magawatt for the site, so thirty thousand dollars per year for a twenty year term. Uh our community engagement strategy and downturn downstream approvals uh that we would need here. Um in addition to that, as I mentioned, we did reach out to fire chief, has have spoken with the uh with the fire prevention officer. Uh I did speak uh quickly about the Six Nations of the Grand River as a potential equity partner, so we've been engaged with them. Um for a number of weeks here, they're very excited about the project and still waiting approval to move ahead with this, but. Uh we've submitted to council and the economic development committee who uh basically will authorize that team to improve negotiations. Should we be successful in decision of municipal resignation. So finally, uh the request of council today is for the municipal support resolution or resolution to defer the uh municipal support resignation to next meeting and ask staff to prepare the analysis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to, I believe we um we have our our dual manager. Right cut it on the line, but what I'm going to do is open the floor now for council to ask questions through the delegation. Once you get the resolution on the floor, I'll open the floor, council, but can ask questions to staff. Counsel first.
Thank you, worship. Uh yeah, I I have a number of questions, ask for some patience. A lot of given this, though through you to uh to you that um I I'll start with uh our last meeting. I asked a question of you, where where do you have such installations in an urban center similar to Tolsenburg? I believe you respond in Fergus. According to golf dot com, media report indicates that's two kilometers south of Fergus. So it's not infinities. I was looking to see if there's a municipality somewhere in Tolsenburg that actually had an installation within its town boundary. Do you have any comments on this?
Uh we this is two kilometers inside of Fergus. Um it's still in within the first. Um to to my knowledge, but I will defer to your.
Well, it's on farm, it's on a farm, two kilometers south of the audio supporting to immediate. Media reviews, not not that that's everything, but I'm just looking for transparency.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And another question is, uh I mean, United project in Helmand County, a much larger installation, two hundred fifty megawatts there. Um they say they can power a city of two hundred thousand per hour. So I know you wouldn't use all that hydro one. Guess the mathematics say when we're we're looking at an installation about one eighth of the size, thirty kilowatts. And doing the math, it would power the town of Tolsenburg, twenty five thousand people for one hour. Is essentially what it is, even though that's not the way the battery system is, is this something?
Yes, I know. They're actually eight hour batteries, so a little bit different than the United.
So we had a complete power failure, we get one hour of power from. From 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 the fully stored battery system.
So to to clarify that, if the power does go down, these will not support the the power for the township. So this isn't to be used as a backup power. Because if it is, it's augmented. So so it doesn't stand by, um if 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 there is a. We will be online. The reason for us is for the sort of safety of the workers downstream of that facility. If you can continue to inject power into the grid. Without confirming safety for the for the workers that are trying to fix the the grid step.
May I continue, the question? Um you mentioned about the acoustic uh study that would be done. I I read in another article where there's a similar installation. They, the municipality required a burn to be available bound. Would that be what you're thinking for this installation? Is there consistency from one battery installation to another? A uniform approach?
No, there's there's not a uniform approach based on what in which receptors in the area are. So we've the study we've done with the vacant lots and where the residential neighborhood is, there wouldn't. Necessarily be a need for it. If that noise and acoustic level got to a point where it was problematic. Something like a burn could be put in place, but there's a number of different uh mitigation me- measures that you can take designing the actual battery facility, for example. Putting the eight HVACs pointing all in towards one another, so that sound doesn't go go out. There's noise damping systems like firms and things that you can use, but there. Um I know it would be specifically designed for for that location to make sure that all the noise receptors in the area are just.
Well, I think that uh worship, I think that is important. Um your site is. You said two kilometers from any residential area, the closest house would actually is just under that, in the Woodhaven subdivision. And I would hope that that population, those people would have an opportunity to learn and to have input. I mean, if those batteries are going to be loading their power at night, there's a constant, I would assume, um and. I mean, we, I think people in the community and close to this location need to be educated, need to have a an opportunity to weigh in on 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 these matters. Would be my thinking. I hope, I hope you would be, if this went forward, able to accommodate and afford that opportunity for people to become educated and ask questions.
I absolutely agree, going to do that and meet with the uh the community as much as as possible throughout that process and educate them on what that sound is and. The main is the the heat valve system to prevent the wind is is the main uh sound source.
I don't mean for my questions to be negative. I think it's important. In a in a time where we need extra hydro and and our growing community, and I think that's a living, but these are important considerations. Um thirty thousand dollars a year to the municipality, is that paid in cash? How does that, how does that come into the finances of the town of Tolsenburg?
I think that would all be in in coordination with with what the staff and staff recommend. We're we're open to difference.
It's not a service in kind, it's it's actually.
It's actually, it's money that they're going to get.
Very good. And um well, two more points, but the um decommissioning after twenty years. What happens if Skyline's not in business? How are we going to have? Are you going to commit money in advance to this so that there's funds always in the bank for decommissioning? Because this is going to cost a lot of money to decommissioning, so.
Yes, yes, we will. That's uh that's been a change in this this procurement that I so support out. There are commissioning obligations on any solar project or battery. Uh project out there today, but there is no requirement to put up a performance bond or that that money. Consideration they didn't do that commissioning, but this procurement that is absolutely required and would be obligated to do that if we're over.
Going to be some money set aside and and to my final question, your worship, this is more a comment perhaps that. You said you spoke to the fire prevention officer. I think it's going to be incumbent on this council to speak to our fire chief. And for our fire chief to be able to advise this council, so what is the impact of our. Fire service, it's already stressed in our community, in our growing community, we're at a point where, you know, I think at some point. It's going to cost more money for fire service because we're going to have to be more full time people. So if there's a number of responses, I I I think we need to know what that is, what that looks like. And hopefully there's um some of these are set up in communities where our fire chief can find out what that is. So. Uh I I really think, I appreciate your presentation and I think it's important for our community to have sort of be building that extra infrastructure of hydro, but. Um uh this is going to take some some comments in my view from our senior management, including our fire chief to the. Give the council some assurance of what we can expect.
Absolutely, and and we're committed to working with the fire department in any way that you can give to satisfy them. Um the fire prevention officer has has driven by the site to confirm access. And and things like that are are adequate. It mentioned people need to speak with the fire chief as well uh about all of that. Um and it's sort of working with it through the site plan, going through that process to incorporate those those asks and commitments to to assist with that and replicate your project.
And those are my questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I have two questions for you, Mayor, and I I believe I asked this one last time you were here, but please refresh me. Why are you asking an urban center to post your facility rather than a rural one?
Uh mainly because they're they're not allowing these projects to be on primary agriculture land. And also, this is where the the power is needed most in these sort of urban centers. Um so that's that's sort of the the need for that. Um specifically, we've targeted industrial areas to stay away from residential areas, but. That the main reason is because prime egg land is is not good enough for government uh as far as so.
Well, I won't argue that, but not all all rural land is probably able to agriculture. There are some wastelands that can be used.
And and just, if I could speak to that quickly, the the other consideration is where there is capacity on our grid as well, has a big factor in that as well. So where you're able actually to connect into the to the grid and the capacity in order to charge and dispatch.
Then matters, and I appreciate your answer. Uh the second question I have. Uh there's going to be upgrades over the years for the uh for your facility as far as cells and whatnot to be done. And I'm not even going to get into where they're going to be disposed of, uh but who sets the standard for when the upgrades are going along? Like, do you have to follow a standard by the I E S O or Minister of the Environment? Are there standards for upgrades that are going to be met on a regular basis? Who says something?
Uh it will, essentially what we'll be doing is looking at the degradation as per the battery manufacturer. So where we'd be looking at that and replacing those cells is. Is when they've degraded or gotten to a point where they're no longer feasible in a battery, we're not able to meet our contractual obligations. Um when I the I E S O calls on us to dispatch power. So it would really be when when the battery stops working at its highest efficiency point ever required to do. Is when we would have to go in and replace those cells. Um I can't speak for us, but typically in batteries, that happens around the ten year mark as you start to see that degradation and. Uh they need for cells to be replaced.
It it's frightening because that batteries are so new to our environment and to our culture. And I believe it's an upcoming thing that done uh. There there are so many questions that are going to be asked over the future. We don't have, first of all, we are concerned about our environment and we we really don't want to. Get stuck with something that's uh that's not working when cleaning up. So when I asked that question last time, is it is that figure that you're talking about? The thirty thousand dollars annually side negotiation? Because in the event that we are stuck with something that will be interfering, we we always never attack the fingers. Stop including in that, if something happens.
Well, uh that that is sort of the purpose of the the decommissioning uh performance bond that we put in place, that we did not leave the batteries here in Tolsenburg. We will take them away. Um with us, we would be decommission those batteries um and take them off site at twenty years. Thank you.
Third question. It's not to the powerful, can I say, or something? It's not to clarification, Mayor. So they're going to be understanding that as well, how many facilities we draw and not our great, but we. Hardly be helpful.
In in terms of the actual uh energy assumption that we do, uh for a thirty megawatt site, we'd be charging the full thirty megawatts. Um in in the evenings, pretty much every day. So thirty megawatts over an eight hour duration and then putting the same back on to the grid. So we're charging it at night when there's excess power, when the community is not in in need of that power. Um we're working with the local uh distribution company. Now to determine what capacity is um in each area to ensure that we're not compromising that capacity, but there is a is a large excess of power in the evenings. Um that's why the I S O has kind of things like, you know, too low overnight rate in different time of use packages. Um to basically incentivize people to use more power in the evening. Um because no one's up at night typically and stop being used. What the why the batteries are coming into play is to use that power, charge it at night and then put it back in the grid when, you know, in between four four P M and seven P M. Really, everyone's using power at a high level.
Well, when some of our hydro goes out, we're not going to benefit from it. We're not going to benefit, but we need regular hydro to the.
That's that's correct, it's not happening now.
Still, we don't have any.
Hey, hey, and across the province, really the the purpose of this procurement from the I S O and the need for more power is because they're projecting a seventy five percent increase. In power consumption over the next twenty five years. So there rapidly, there's new assets. So the two options they're looking at is build more generation. Or you can find uh find ways to have the capacity to store that power when it's not being used and put it back in play when it is when they're over here with the height of it.
And you're following me more. Just advising, why don't you pick on Tolsenburg and not just go anywhere else? We've been back to base now. Why?
I think we we've looked at a a number of different communities. This isn't the only place where we're proposing uh developing a system like this. We've actually been in five different. Um municipalities having having very similar conversations about about this project or about these types of projects. So it's not just picking on Tilsenburg. I think these are. Um these are really the good projects. We we have experience working in in Tilsenburg with solar systems here already. Um there there wasn't anything to do with Tilsenburg, trying to help a partner.
And just one, Madam Mayor, how long has this been out there? Where do you want to turn them? What you're proposing?
This is the second uh second round of of the long term procurements. So I so has already done uh one of these rounds. Um last year, L T one, this is the second second round of battery storage.
Counsel Spencer. Want to hear some delegations? And these types of energy systems are. Um going to be a central part of the power grid in the future. Um is there much risk for attack cyber or security attacks through that?
No, no more than anywhere else. I don't think there's a specific risk um to battery and energy storage. Um we will have all the security apparently in place to prevent that. Um you know, that is mandated again through through the contract and the I S O. Really, we're at their uh. Um really take direction from them on like the dispatch, um to go back, but no different risk than than you have on a daily basis.
I want to clarify one thing. It's the hydro usage. You said um thirty megawatts. So you do draw, is that doing?
Yeah, that's that's daily, it's.
Thirty megawatts daily um.
Per per hour, so eight hours, so it'd be two hundred and forty watts.
You're going to be drawing two hundred and forty megawatts of power?
Thirty megawatts an hour for eight hours and then putting the same back on to the grid in hiding that times.
Okay, but. Like, I guess my feeling to see like even even um like you said that you're charging at night. But I don't believe we got that kind of capacity, like. That we need to have that capacity at night, but I guess that's what people have to determine with um with our hydro. But my concern would be is if um you're going to remark that much hydro during the evenings and say that Ira, an industry that comes forward. But, you know, when ships twenty four hours, since we know we're getting a high megawatt user, are we restricting ourselves? Um for future industrial growth because we're not in fact, we are going to find them. Because I I'm thinking that you're kind of getting one, I think I'd be very happy to say we'd be exclusive. Our fighting, which is just.
I I I apologize, I can't speak towards what's in Tilsenburg drawing power, but I can say we have checked checked the capacity and there is capacity to charge at night and. My only sort of counter to your question is that group came in, that industrial center came in and needed that power twenty four hours a day. If it's not there at night for us drawing that power, it's definitely not there during the day when the entire town is is running through those peak dominant times. And this would really help during those peak hours to help further expansion and growth of that industry. Um by putting power on when it is at extremely high demand during the daytime hours. For those peak hours.
Okay, so then just clarify further. So you'd be dumping thirty one, thirty megawatts of power on system.
That's correct.
How about your else of drawing thirty hours?
Yes, but only drawing at at nighttime, um and then between seven A M and eleven P M. We would be at some times throughout that, we could have the ability to put on that same amount of power volume there.
Is there not some form of loss efficiency? Like you're you're saying, like you're drawing a hundred, are you giving a hundred back? There has to be some. You know, like in pipe lines, there's a loss of loss of hydro by time it gets. Your point could might be, so do the batteries are the same? Are you giving the full hundred percent?
Yes, there would be some line loss incorporated in there, but based on our proximity to those uh distribution lines, I think it would be very, very minimal. Yes, there would be some line loss incorporated in there, but based on our proximity to those uh distribution lines, I think it would be very, very minimal. And we would gain for that um point of recharging the batteries as well.
Okay, so you would be, um you get your contract, you get paid through I S O. Um then my further question is, so we need the thirty megawatts to charge the batteries, but what about your H V A? We talked about a H V A, which I think is on vertical cooling system. Um so how much power do you draw to run the H V A system?
Uh essentially, we would size the substation importantly to do that, I don't have that exact figure on me today.
So essentially, you could be drawing more than a third of you megawatts, it's uh because you have to learn, and that runs twenty four hours, but. The cooling systems.
When when required, there's the thermal action and sensors in there to trigger whether the H V A needs to run or not, depending on the temperature of the internal unit. And these these units are designed for global global use. Um so I will say the H V As are designed that they can be in, you know, the Middle East are very cold temperatures and things like that too. So these are very robust systems. Um typically on our planet, we wouldn't be running at a hundred percent uh of that H V A system that at any given time. And I just on on the capacity issue, I do want to say we we engage with uh with the local, with the L D C. Um I S O has a very, very um detailed procurement for this and on how they assess capacity to ensure this does not have a negative impact to the panel. So there are a lot of regulations that we have to follow um to meet that, and it's actually not even us setting except determination. That is, you know, the I E S O does their own internal um process to assess that and confirm that we would not be having negative impact on the on the local grid here.
Okay, I I guess I have one final question, you're not generating any extra power. I mean, so basically, it's power that's not used during the night, you're packaging it, and then you're done, you know, the next day, but it's no less. That's the possibility of that.
No, not in progress.
No, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, any further questions from Council, Councilor Parker?
Three, Mary Go Daisy, um I I appreciate you guys' presentation and everything like that. Um and I I hear those regulated by the I E S O, and I'm just wondering if there's reports or information for assurances from the I E S O. Municipality can see um in advance, because I I'm going to say here and say today with the information that I got from you guys. I'm not willing to accept this, I don't have all of it. I have information from you guys that want to be here and be working with the municipality with it. But I want to make sure that, one, it's good for the environmental, make sure that it's good for the actual municipality, thirty thousand dollars a year for a megawatt. Well, I want to make sure that we're getting assurances and I think that it's going to be good for the municipality, so. Um is there anywhere that we can go and look for information from the I I E S O about this type of project? Um that might make things a little bit easier or even sitting around and so.
Uh I I apologize that we don't have all our, you know, I've got instructions. This is the the first procurement that's done where municipalities have the opportunity to comment. But previously with the I S O, you were awarded a contract, you were told you should go anywhere and the municipalities had it listed. So the change in process here is essentially what the I S O, I S O has done is said, you need to seek a municipal support resolution. If the municipality is okay having a project like this um within within their their boundaries. Um we don't have a contract yet, we are trying to submit a contract in December, hopefully get awarded sometime in June. So things like the fully designed site layout, working with the fire department to make sure that there's adequate there and have full sign off for them. We're not asking for permission to move ahead with that today, we're simply asking for that municipal support resolution that gives us the ability to submit for a contract. But we still do have to come back and make sure that, you know, working with that and fire, that site plan, that fire department's okay with it and go through that process. So it is, you know, part of the reason you don't have all that information is because we don't have it yet. We haven't committed to spend that money without having having a contract in hand. So I I I'm, I I apologize, I hear you loud and clear, and I wish the process was different and we had a little foresight into that. But I, you know, assure you that we are committed to working with all those stakeholders to make sure that this project does uh meet those meet those standards. Thank you.
Councilor Parsons, yeah. To the emergency building and Councilor Parker, there's a question. Do you um not, uh well, Skyline may not have some installations, there are installations in place. For example, in Elden County, right, the United, that wasn't built by you, it was instructed by another company. So to the point of Councilor Parker, that was asking, be able to see and for our fire chief to speak to that fire chief and all the questions that we might have. Would that be a a a an important opportunity for us to to learn more and see what's involved here?
I'd I'd happily provide me something to to, you know, invite you up to see a system like that.
It's not your system, but it'd be similar.
Yes, yes, and we have a lot of relationships with with battery battery owners in the area, and I could find something close by that. If if that's of interest to you, I'd happy to offer that, offer that and maybe that too. And we do have a stonemix for good battery system set up at at one of our hotels as well, so we do have some batteries, but that's another.
Any further questions? Seeing none, Councilor Spencer. You've got.
Oh, yes, right, sorry. And I do actually have a question to do. Let me open the floor, does Council have any questions or are the general um manager of T H I, Councilor?
Thank you, Mary Go Daisy, to uh Greg. Um I I guess my question revolves um around a potential report to Council. Are you guys at this point able to provide an conference report outlining some of the concerns that Council may have? And any potential um, I guess, concerns and or benefits to the municipality, obviously, working with the fire chief um if we were to request it?
So Councilor Parker, you're looking for a report from T H I specifically?
Yeah, uh T H I and obviously working with the fire chief, I think without there would be some information needed for me to.
Yeah, I, T H I can endeavor to provide that to Council.
Any further questions? So I have a couple, um and one moving about capacity. So the comment raised in the delegation that there's no net new hydro, so um how does this? Help or not help the capacity situation?
It's cer- it certainly helps. Um. Um as you're well aware, the capacity at the Tilsenberg T S is a hundred and ten megawatts. In twenty twenty four, we peaked at a hundred and three, so we are obviously approaching capacity at the T S. Um we are in the middle of a regional planning study with the I S O and and capacity. Um will likely exceed um a hundred and thirty megs, a hundred and forty megs in twenty twenty nine or twenty thirty. Um based upon studies, so this will certainly help. Um will it solve the capacity issue at the town of Tilsenberg? Uh not in itself, no. Um. Uh um I think you're looking at for for the capacity that the bez will provide the town of Tilsenberg. Um you'd have to split it into two fifteen megawatt projects, so it would help in terms of, because it it there's no redundancy if you count it as one thirty megawatt project. Um so without redundancy, it can't count towards the capacity for the town. Um so with that, divided in half, certainly fifteen megawatts goes a long way, buys us time. Uh allows the planning process to go through properly. Um and 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 really, it takes some of the urgency off, but certainly doesn't fully mitigate what's what we're experiencing. Um because we're just right, right? We also know that we're not the only L D C connected to this T S. Uh Hydro One has a lot of growth that they're projecting, as well as Tilsenberg Hydro. Um so while this certainly helps, it doesn't doesn't end the capacity constraints entirely.
I think that's the main question that I had, oh, my other question would be, um. About they said that they would be drawing thirty um megawatts per hour, thirteen hours. And do we have that capacity available in the evening? And then the second question is that would be what I asked about if we had a large industrial user of electricity wanting to come in. Um are we going to restrict ourselves?
Yeah, uh we do have the capacity, um because obviously, as as they indicated, the the power will be drawn at nighttime and where there's plenty of capacity at night. Um all the industry in Tilsenberg is daytime operating, our peak is about one in the afternoon uh as a as an L D C. And uh the T S peak is around the same time. Um so it it would definitely, so the only time it would restrict us is if you had someone come in that operated twenty four, seven, three, four shifts a day. Um and wanted to draw that at night. Um um so that would be the only potential hiccup is if someone drew at night.
Any further questions for our management? Not uh Councilor Spencer.
Uh before myself, and second by Deputy Mayor of Bears. That A, Council received the delegation from Mount Kennedy and Bucastlin, Skyline Energy Repairing and Battery Energy Storage Systems, I believe, and B. That Skyline provide public presentation consultation. C, that staff provide report and analysis for comment, including fire chief and T H I. And to the Skyline provide counsel, provide counsel with more, um I mean, so data and information on this. Like we have considered any other, I'm sending that to them.
Councilor Parsons. I'm here, C again, please, C.
It's that provide report and analysis for comments, including the fire chief and T H I.
Um I'm seeking clarification on the public consultation. With that being, if this council approved it, or you want a public council consultation, is that what you said personally?
Yeah, it's, Councilor Parsons had noted that the people nearby should be consulted and let know that it is potentially likely going there. Which I'm not too fond of the ratings.
So you want them to have a local customer something for residents? My my only other suggestion would be is that um it should probably go into a court too, but um.
I would think management would be able to give an analysis, so comment like from their perspective. But I'd be happy to get a suggestion to ignore it. Yeah, sure. And E, that. Yeah. Right, yeah, I mean, uh the T H I Board of Directors. With location for comment.
Senator, you're fine, you're nodding your head. Council have any further comments? Seeing none, all of us in favor? Very opposed, Senator.
May I even ask a clarified question on on the resolution, if that possible?
Um no. Sorry. We can, we not have America. Okay, next we have traffic advisory committee recommendation. And um will you want to keep that anything to the floor? None? Self explanatory, does staff or council have any questions regarding the report? Seeing none, uh I'm gonna give her a move on second, Councilor Parsons, we're not so soon.
Moved by Parsons, sent by Councilor Lucy, and the report C S twenty five thirty, entitled, traffic advisory committee recommendation being received for information. Folks, excuse me. Uh and B, the council break staff to investigate feasibility of a four way stop at Sanders Street and already have report back to council with recommendation.
Any comments? Questions? All of them favor? Here. Next, having made with you eleven point two in the chapter of work regarding the leaving of fees. For students. Are there so any comments that you want to add in here to the report?
Um so through you, Madam Mayor, I'm just so my council is aware, this report's coming out on the same council meeting as the recent fees by law. So we have included the zero fees and rates of fees by law as per the notice and on consideration, thank you.
And for the public, it's for our schools to be able to use the pickleball courts, essentially, there's no charge, we will test courts, and this is exactly the same policy for pickleball courts. And there was a delegation that came to one of the fans to request that. Um is there any questions from Council?
Yes, question, please, and for you, I did do, I heard that, hard to my creation. So um and I'm in favor of the school uh students using the ball courts, of course, but we know that there is a a large demand in community for pickleball courts, we just don't seem to have enough of them to meet the man all the times. But um I'm I'm myself, uh wouldn't must play that the ball in Anfield School, for example, inside the gymnasium, the courts are all marked out there. Uh are are we considering letting our high school students access that facility, perhaps as a uh as a first use with a with a perhaps a spillover to the outside or set or might demand? Question for them.
So through you, Madam Mayor, no, that was not part of the request, so we did not discuss the in the report.
So just subsequently, is that something that we could see if there's some opportunity to to reduce, you know, the demand on the outside courts? To see if they could use the Anfield School, perhaps even the Glendale Gymnasium, but I know in the Anfield School, uh it's usually pretty tall and learn much.
Um so, Madam Mayor, um any use of this school would be the school board's decision. Um we do offer indoor framework hall and outdoor during the winters, so that. It's well, it's a horn, but any any suitable space should be a mask.
I I think my point is just simply to try to make the limited number of pickleball courts we have as available to the community as possible without the circumstances. I I would hope that the uh the applicants for this, the school students or the teachers um would have seen those opportunities, thank you.
We, Mayor, related to the way Council Parsons, he acted, and I remember the pickleball association came presented and requested by the student.
I wonder if they have other thought about asking the school? I I I I support the resolution.
Who's this, Senator?
Uh through the chair to the director, um I I supported as well, I'm just wondering like, will it be used like for tournaments? And would they booking off? Like, how it would be done, I'm just curious, I know that um like you said, person said that times are critical and um I would I hate to see um I mean upset because courts weren't available and booked. Um so is that an option that they would be looking at, booking a certain time for gym class or a tournament or something like that?
So through you, Madam Mayor, to Councilor Spencer, yes, um they would have to book, so currently, if they use the tennis courts, the um gym teacher does give us a head up. And then we will post a sign on tennis courts, any that for school services. It's usually in mid afternoon when the court. And their season, um they said it is September, October, and then May, June. So they wouldn't take the reports explicitly or in the summer at all. Um but they would be booking ahead of time, but we need the centers to know where they're, we can decide.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, um Councilor Parsons.
Moved by Parsons, sent by Councilor Lucy, and the report R C P twenty five six degree headed, waiving a court case for students being received as information.
Any further comments from Council, all of us in favor? Next, we have the memo from the Long Point region, and well, um if you want to comment on it, also, that being there.
Um I actually have chaired the uh Long Point Conservation Authority. And uh the Ministry of Conservation and Energy is introducing a bill to take the thirty six Ontario Conservation Authorities to run the task. And reduce them, combine them to be uh seven conservation authorities. Um just to give you a little bit of background, Long Point Conservation Authority is represented by eight municipalities. And there's a member on the board for each of the eight. Total of the new seven, there are thirty nine municipalities. That would be a uh. That would be a uh. Combined to create one board direction. We are sold and I've listed here who they are, the door tabs, capri, et cetera, et cetera. What they're doing, we have been notified at a very, very high level that. This is what they're proposing and they're doing inputs. Uh, now. About, you know, job replacements and so on, what responsibilities might be changed to municipalities, uh, what responsibilities might be lost? Um, there's people who give persons the land and money, the conservation authorities, there's some uh, reserves there that there at least uh. Uh, gifts there that uh, several gifts that people leave. Uh, in their will. And uh, we can spend the interest, but not the principal, like what happens? Hundreds of questions to be asked, but none of these answers have been written yet. So there was a meeting Wednesday again with this. And I just wanted to let our municipal partners, our eight municipal partners, all who see this letter, say, I will keep their breast of what's going on. So let's um, I don't think the sky is going to fall over this, but uh. We're looking for efficiencies everywhere, all governments are looking for efficiencies, we feel that this is one, it may or may not come through. You know, but we're up for work now, like. We want to make sure that everybody retains their jobs, that's that's really very, very important. And I can't see why that won't happen, so very early, it would not come through until they would start in twenty twenty-seven. So I'll answer any questions I can, if I don't have the answers, uh, I'll see if I get them for you, but I don't think the answers have been written. Uh, but like I say, the meeting's Conservation Authority, there's thirty-six of us. And we're meeting on Wednesday to uh. To compile our questions to give to the Minister of uh, for what's going to. Well, that's I think just.
Thank you, any questions? Seeing um, Deputy Mayor.
Move by myself, second by council Spencer, the council receives the item, our twelve twenty-one of this information.
Any further comments? All of us in favor? Here, next we move to our mental results, Q three, um. Director fully, if you have any clues to um, add or highlights in your first report for this consolidation.
Just to highlight, but the building part is wearing uh, credit for the seven thousand dollars deficit. But overall, uh, with the amount of account. The Q three variance would be about a bump in the volume of surplus, um, with, you know, the fleet to build in the apartment we. Transfer to enrolled common reserves and out that among seven thirty-one thousand, there is a legal variance across the border. And the rest downstairs, permanent areas and force, um, our surplus. Uh, in the year close to the transmending areas reserves for our reserve policy.
Thank you, council, some of the questions on consolidated report. Council, you saying?
Move by myself, second by council, or persons that the report titled F I N twenty-five zero four one twenty twenty-five consolidated. Uh, current work operating results be received to information.
Any further comments in here at school, all of us in favor? Here, um, now it's the departmental results, so if you have any questions um, to a specific director regarding departmental results. Is there anything firstly that you'd like to highlight? And so open the floor to council. Questions regarding departmental results. Then I have one from age, it won't be there in twenty-five, it's transit. The revenue is half, but we believe what was expected to see rapid change. Make one hundred and twenty-five. Yes, transit, so. Budget is thirty-one thousand, using the charges, actuals fifteen, so um. I believe it's said fair rating under twelve thousand, so I could. Um. What's happening, like I know the ration. Uh, during COVID, obviously very slow, but then reaction picked up, are we losing reaction again, um? What do you need to?
Any ready questions? I don't really, I don't have the answer to what question is pointing. Besides, I wasn't aware of what that was used for, the project for the revenue. Um, what I can do is go back and look at the numbers from this year, from this year. To see is that twenty seventeen increase, that is, maybe find ways to promote. Use the most the task service down. What I know is that this year either newly cast its service ended, so I don't know that have any path also. Yeah, since what will be there.
Thank you, like, I just wondering if the roots need to be reviewed or maybe there needs to be some form of review, I agree, um. Like, oh, so since um, we were often for transit from the communities regarding like, because the bridge is closed, have we, we haven't seen? Any uptake in that or?
Uh, to the mayor, yes, um, I report to the report a week ago, and we have seen this emergency. I think that particularly, that's out of their program that has been. Um, implemented by, by, by council. We're hoping maybe December eighth, rather than that day, for more updates, uh, with the attitude. But I don't know how that, uh, we actually impacted, but. If you ask me, then it's, I think in the past, there was only like a handful people who used to. Now we're seeing, uh, like those standards being too difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Yeah, through you, Mary, always the, uh, to the director, um, look, I'll follow you up on the transit comment, um. Typically during the Christmas period, we have a three brighter gift for the evil bus, I think it's on Saturdays, or at least to downtown. Um, obviously, that's going to have an impact, um. An increased impact on this because that's going to be funding that we don't see. And so, and just for clarification, typically that gets funded by the town for.
Yes, yes, as I think of it.
Top one of N D A. It's the town.
So it's to the mayor to the nation right now, from those years.
All right, so we'll look forward to a report, you said maybe in the summer, okay. Any further questions? Um. Captain Parker, you have a resolution?
Yeah, move by myself, second, sorry, twenty twenty-five third quarter department to resolve purity for information.
Any comments from council? So I have a few, um, fire fossil layers, they need to be by, just a reminder that can you change your batteries, if you have. The hard load systems in your home, they still expire, check the date. Um, they tend to go off at two thirty A M, I don't know why that, that's when they expire, but they do. Um, we've had significant industrial growth, fifteen million, um, which is great to see, the residential market, um, is slow. To put it into perspective for the community, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, son ninety-two. Plus million by the end of Q three, twenty twenty-four was sixty-three million, twenty twenty-five is twenty-two point four million in permanent, um, parents issue. Um, several family homes. They're actually up from last year, there was sixteen last year, twenty-four issued townhomes are down significantly to thirty-two and last year was eighty-two. Um, total dwellings are significantly down this year, sixty-nine and last year was two hundred and thirty. No, all right, um. Any further comments, all of us in favor, here. Next, we move to surplus land declaration, see this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, um, this report sees the legal to declare our lane, saving the side of some ruins that are required. Uh, we, these are very certain, but this is a, a small label that's not constructed, it's basically a gap between two residential houses. But that accesses the ravine and they're approached by the adjacent property, which is solid, uh, it's going to do their own internal process. Uh, there are comments mainly relating to the stormwater, like the process of that property. And so based on the town to see, um, by looking to sell, um, of course, clearly then surplus in itself, it's based on property. I will note that, um, there is an actual driveway on this lane, uh, if you look to the area, let me tell you, you know, the neighborhood. But no, the there is a driveway on this uh, lane, not sure how it got proved, but it's something I think it approved because the only access to that. The rock, that possible cell site is through our language, so clearly we'd be looking to sell. Um, the bulk of this language, the property itself, and then perhaps an script to the property. But those are the normations, um, and I'll take any questions.
Does that have any questions? Miss President.
Yes, in the uh, report, our lawyer recommends save one by one the bottom. For the lands, uh, to to prevent, uh, those those uh, lands merging together. Um, I know we're going to see a resolution, I want to just include that, is that something we should be worried about? Um, is he returned to where we hold, uh, uh, one by one piece of land, is that, is that what I read in this?
Not, not quite, actually, just explain it a bit more, so when there's a legal lot that's in a, in a subdivision. That might be locked into the. What we have to do in this case is if we want, we actually to take ownership of one foot by one foot square there. To change the legal definition of that property from being locked and not just being. And then what we do is then we enable the land assignment to merge. Uh, with that property that we're that they already, and that means that they can't then foot that property separately, we want the property merged. So if they can't put it separately, we need to sell something like that.
So you're worshiping, we haven't heard the resolution, but it's not there, is that something that's going to be done internally? Or does that need to be in this resolution?
No, we'll bring it back with the, uh, well, we may look, as we may recall, to the mayor, uh, we did actually this recently, so mine is, well, I'm not going to be a lot, so that's. I think we're starting to prefer the option, we continue already reserve, that's awesome.
Understood.
May, thank you, any further questions from council? If not, council, no sir.
Thank you, we're done, the technical council sent it, they have had a report, two hundred and fifty M's, twenty-five dash zero three three surplus land declaration. Other land we receive can be, if the other land save and accept. Or any fees required by public authorities, and certain surplus, then these are the towns that are causing the closing of the bylaw. Twenty twenty-one dash zero three one, land disposition, including notifications that the public can see. That by law, closing other lanes of public roadway, we brought forward to council's consideration. And D, if the development commissioner be authorized, we negotiate a agreement of purchase in failure for these land subjects. To be brought back to council for approval, thank you.
Any further comments from council? All of us in favor? Your next, uh, achievement three point two, then Norman Innovation Park in Sebus.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, uh, this report here sees councils that still need to approve two additional change orders for the, or length of the design. The band on the innovation bar, the first one of those is related to a number of additional profit that they incur, we already. Um, social ability related to their needs next to the bar. And then the other part of that is actually doing the environmental assessment, uh, as far as for the work on highway three, so. This is a conjunction, the highway three, of course, was M T O right away. And at the time that this uh, plan was started, the E A environmental assessment was actually excluded from the uh, designer contract, we didn't know what we want to that. Now that we do know, uh, consultant buys this, that this change order, uh, or sorry, this environment assessment is a part of. And the cost of that is a hundred fourteen thousand dollars, so council previously approved about seven hundred thousand dollars in funding for this design, up to seven hundred thousand. Um, the hundred was completed just over six hundred thousand, so we've had a few previous change orders that needed that. And now, uh, with our budget, we're putting back to council for approval for this work. I will note that this work, in the digital, the environmental assessment work, um, is particularly critical. Um, to help understand and finalize consign options with connecting uh, to highway three between future industrial service room. So we need to do this process and when we reach in that process, there may be going anywhere, but what best options are our full talent here for. Including the report as well, and they're saying they want to drop, no study that hasn't been submitted, um, so that's actually one of the approval process, right, that will follow the. Archaeological engineering studies. And so that that process is a way, and now we're, we'll be one of the speed, uh, with the environmental assessment, of course. Um, same part of that is the other mind, we're trying to incur, uh, to, uh, keep the project moving forward, so with that, now, Mayor, I'll stop looking to be.
Please, council, any questions? So once this is done, it's determined what is required at that intersection, or is M T O determining them?
Well, to the, to speak to the main to that bear, um, so essentially, we're doing this in conjunction with M T O reports. But really, our environmental assessment has to look at all the options, so look at this as, oh, we just don't do anything. We look at, uh, if you look at a direct connection like we have in invasion way, and will also look at a roundabout option as well. So then it looks at all the things of the study to determine what is the actual best option for the product. And now I have to recommend that to approval to the M T O, and they decide within the day, we can direct our environmental assessment process.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Council Spencer.
Um, move by myself, second by Deputy Mayor Vares, uh, that reporting the M two five seven three four ten of Van Roman Innovation Park, change orders five and six, we've seen them be. Then the development commissioner be authorized to execute change order five, development boundary, immense full drain design in the amount of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars plus net H S T. We don't, uh, consulting limited in support of phase two of the Van Roman Innovation Park, and see that the development commissioner. Be authorized to execute scope change six, highway three environmental assessment in the amount of a hundred and fourteen. Um, thousand dollars plus net H S T, with different consulting limited in support of base two of the Van Roman Innovation Park.
Comments from council? All of us in favor? Here, next we move to finance budget survey, we will, you know, always find term. Sir, Harin's director, have any comments that we'd like to make?
Thank you, my mayor, uh, to you, uh, just that this is the native survey that we've been in conjunction with the county. And we are a member of municipalities, so we're grateful to the county for administering the survey, and that evolved. Uh, overall, we see that the respondents of this year were higher in twenty twenty-two versus than the day before last year. So that's, that's all the news, um, and just to put highlights in the, see the greatest improvement cited in the moves of bridges. Versus the highest reduction in private college, look at the uh, final enforcement. Uh, sixty-five percent of respondents, you know, that the overall value we see for the past year was fairly good. And obviously, overall, these comments, um. Are being taken to compress that, uh, that's been pressing through the budget.
Overall, overall, what is, we can basically maintain services, but there there are actually some big numbers for the. Any questions from council? Deputy Mayor.
Think it's uh, more of a comment than a question, it's, it's interesting to see. That of the taxes we collect from residential tax pay. Uh, fifty-seven cents on the dollar goes to Tulsa. We're a collection agent for Oxford County in the Board of Education. And I just did a little calculation of my own tax bill, which is about four thousand bucks a year. So twenty-two hundred eighty goes to Tulsa. Thirteen twenty goes to Oxford County and four hundred goes to Board of Education. So just sort of an information item that, you know, my tax bill went up, well. So just sort of an information item that, you know, my tax bill went up well. We weren't responsible for fifty seven cents on the dollar of the tax bill going up or going down or stays. Just, it's interesting to see that, that uh. We, we don't get the whole dollar, we don't get to keep it, we collect it, but we'll give, just kind of.
Any questions? There's no questions at the emergency resolution?
Move on myself, second by councillor Parsons, the councillor receives an report of finance twenty five dash zero three six. Twenty twenty six public info survey results as of today.
Any comments from council? I had um a record of these, they were obviously in the county budget a couple of weeks ago. Um the interesting thing was, number one, I think that the county and now, um I think it was a fantastic job because it really. Um laid out the responsibilities and roles of each level of government very clearly. However, when the comments came in, two of the most common things were healthcare and bag tags, waste pick up. Um healthcare is provincial and waste is um obviously our upper tier, um Oxford County. So I found it, I just find it interesting. It was very well laid out who did what. But um most of the comments, I know that overall across the county, bag tags was really a hot issue. Which um you know, I can say that the representative from this town has tried fighting them multiple times. But um it was, it was really a hot, I mean, that we saw across all the communities. I know. Right, January is kind of, anyways, any further comments? All those in favor? Rates and fees by law. And um is there anything that you would like to highlight uh directly?
Thank you, my mayor. Uh just that this was again an annual exercise, uh sometimes in the midyear, we'll look at the rates if there is enough. Uh request from departments to adjust these charges. Um under council resolution, the rates are to increase by some K I every year. Uh and so the majority have been uh being back to thirty two percent, but it's been. Overall, we estimate approximately forty three thousand dollar increase as a result of the increased fees. Uh assuming, of course, same level of. And that is being incorporated to the.
Thank you. Question, councillor Parker?
To you, uh Mayor Bill Daisy, and that's the director of recreation. Uh Andrew Lush here, I'm looking specifically on page two twenty four, there's two ball diamonds and um both the U and. All teams. There was a twenty five or twenty nine dollar fee that was added on for Keen last year for diamond, or for diamond improvements, I think it was. You don't see that listed in here. It came as a surprise to. A couple of different organizations last year, so I'm wondering if that needs to be added in. Not complaining about that being there, it's just, I don't think it's included in the actual total cost. Um so potentially.
Yes, it is in there. It's under capital reinvestment of the ball diamonds. Um and it's twenty six.
I didn't, I was looking at. Thank you.
Further questions from council? Answer the first.
By person, second by councillor Luciani. The council receives report uh finance twenty five thirty seven twenty twenty six fees by law update. And B, but a bylaw be, uh bylaw to provide a schedule fees for certain municipal applications, services and permits for twenty twenty six. Be brought forward for council consideration.
Thank you, any comments from council, those in favor? And next we move to. I need by. Um and I will, straight over to our director of operations if we have any comments.
Thank you, mayor. Some old investigation avoided by try those stuff. Uh their recommendation that they're. And when I made you the file, it include um a section to view through. Then the beginning time was.
So I'm gonna ask you a question for clarification, clarification, because I saw a bunch of comments on paper. We are not looking to regulate the number of bird feeders, correct? We are not. So to the public, we are not looking at reg, at regulating the number that can, so just for clarification to the public. Basically, this just covers that by law to be able to do something if a certain yard or something. Is attracting a lot of learning or wildlife. Um to their yard, correct? It's just basically powering by a lot to have a way to do so.
That is correct. And what is key here is that. Uh the word nuisance. Uh all this is, is a little bit random nuisance, making the place a nuisance in the deal. In presence, however, three, all by law, I'm for that and by the way, that's.
Thank you, and I do appreciate it, much like, um they went around to neighboring communities. You know, to see what, and there are communities that do regulate bird feeders, not that far away, so. I just wanted to clarify that to the public because there is a misunderstanding on what this is about. Um anyways, any further questions from council? That be mayor.
Um one question, and, and I guess I can direct this to the director. Uh we do have a property standards, but. That covers farming and so on. Uh could this be utilized in the same property standard spot as an amendment? Rather than a separate bylaw for what's here? Uh for example, if I want to feed rabbits. Um well, probably feed rabbits, so if my neighbors complain about it. It could be covered under a property standard by law rather than rate a whole week five. To create or to feed wild rabbits.
Um so to the mayor's statement, um so very understanding, so I'm making a simple matter. I just add, I.
But that answers my question, thank you.
Thank you, my dear mayor. So it's just an amendment, we're not.
Okay.
Perfect. Any further questions? Thank you for simply clarification on that. Um if not, councilor.
Move on myself, second by councillor Parker. That A, that the report will be D twenty five dash zero five four five regulating bird feeder and feeding wildlife, he receives his information. And B, there are bylaws to amend by law twenty twenty one dash zero one three. Bylaw is a vital licensing regulation for all animals with the counter to the bird present in council.
We put the comments from council, those in favor? Eric, next we move to some speakers and leases. Um these are pretty straightforward, we do them all the time. I'll open the floor to council. If they have any questions, they're may see that we have them often. Um with us this week, which is council, have any questions? Then, I have a question. Um I think I feel, I know we've got three of these coming, but um. I feel it took a long time to come to council. And I'm trying to understand why it took a long time to come to council. And I'm also wondering how we can expedite um is in a quicker timeline.
Here, my mayor, yes, a little bit of time. The two of them were a little bit complicated enough, one being that. It's still taking this time to try to acquire money, so on, for the, for the two big hangers. Uh the other one was. Was also a little complicated due to um the death of someone and the fleek eating the hanger to the. To the daughter, as well as, well, we're looking at the. The past, and this was, this one of the hangers that, that concerned about five different people that worked at the hangar. There's a combination of, they sold the hanger previously to another individual. Without taking this to us, if, because that other will take through the council. Um. Those are the two complicates, and further, and kind of rest. Let me that, and we have the resources and process in place to make sure it's served, but they did, this will be.
I wanted to add that, get complete and turn on review on processes and that's how we solve. Um we are hoping to provide clarification to all tenants and what is required. When they are trying for a new hanger or transfer or termination agreement. So in advance, they, they know what documents they need to, needs to be signed. Uh will be filed, they will follow the prepared camp of consideration. So for a general review, we are, we're going to provide information first to the committee and then. All the tenants, so they, or where does they know what documents is.
Yeah, sounds like a good plan. Um any further questions from parents? I'll say.
Myself, uh council, or move on myself, second by councillor Rose, I have a report will be D twenty five. Please title, maybe V three seven, and we will come with, if you receive this information. The council directs staff to present a bylaw that authorizes the merit and scale that execute the hanger when lease transfer agreement. Back to a V three seven for council's consideration.
And we pass more, we need comments from council, those in favor? Eric, um we asked one, another, uh Van Hoos termination, council has a question. Same, that's what I got.
Move on myself, second by councillor Spencer. A, that report will be D twenty five dash zero one five, A, G three dash one. And G three dash two, and lease termination, we received information. And B, that the mayor of the studio, we authorize to execute a lease termination agreement for taxi G three. Lot one and taxi G three lot two with aviation maintenance limited, and springer pan. C, that council directs staff to present a bylaw to repeal by law four, three, three, one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any comments? Those in favor? Eric, next one, transfer lease ownership hanger G two dash four. So council have any questions? Council response.
Move on myself, second if I definitely were aware, seven four, we do T five dash zero five three title. Hanger G two dash four, transfer lease ownership, we received this information. That council approved the hanger, the use uh land lease transfers for taxiway. G two lot four to Mary Road, fifty percent share, and J. Atkinson Way, fifty percent share. And that the required lease, uh items, we attach and form a part of the original there reason. Land lease agreement dated July first, two thousand and eight.
Thank you. Any comments from council, those in favor? Eric. Thank you, Richard. Uh next we move to the floor of the primary. Here, and I'll turn it over to um. Director Greenway, or any others.
Thank you. Turn to my mayor, give you a pop, the manager of personal facilities online, Adam Edwin. And he's not getting any questions.
Alright, welcome back. Um are there any highlights that we want to read, council?
Uh nothing to highlight at this point. I think the report is pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will open the floor to council for questions. Oh, I have, okay, go ahead, councillor Rose.
Thank you, my mayor. We just wait to see if anybody answers. I have a question for Adam. Um. We have this, we had this associated council on group, they've done it a few years ago. But I'm wondering why we're asking for someone else to do a review on that, or to. For someone to, someone else to give us, like, why we don't have uh people in our own. That can do that, whereas they have to have somebody below, they have to pay somebody seven thousand dollars, and we have our own people. To do those kind of things, their own.
Yes, through you, madam mayor, to the councillor. Um I did review with our engineering team. Um they felt. With the quote we got for the engineering study, their expertise was in building science and um. We don't actually have anybody, to my understanding, in the engineering department with that specialty, so that's why they recommended that we go with a third party.
So did we have um masonryers come in and work at the clock tower? And did they recommend that we get a report, or did they be able to just do the job without having a report come in?
Uh through the mayor, that is correct. We did get three quotes uh to do some masonry repairs. And two of the three contractors warned us that uh there's something. Uh more catastrophic happening behind the scenes, so they did actually recommend that we look further into. Um I, I guess essentially not to chase good money after bad. Um they, they don't feel that the temporary solution of replacing certain bricks here and there would solve the issue. It would um just reoccur in the future.
So I didn't get to see any reports of her, any of them just decided we covered the buildings?
Um it's actually, we did get quotes for that as well. Um was not within the, this year's uh budget that we had for the brick repair. Um it was on nearly double actually, but further to my report here, I found a twenty nineteen building condition assessment. Where it actually brought to light that the exterior brick is part of the structure of this uh facility. So I think we want to confirm that the brick in the structure is proper before we just covered it over.
And he's one last call, then mayor. Are we just getting votes on the brick, or are we getting votes whether the building is stable and not bad that time?
So this would be a fulsome support or report, sorry. Um it would include. A full um investigation, destructive investigation and a, a scope for repair. On both the structural and the exterior brick.
Mr. Parker, the girl is to, um thank you for the report. Uh just clarification on the end report. Um it will, i- if they suggest that we need to replace it, not a big part of it is more not just the repair, are correct?
Through the, through the mayor, yes, that is correct.
I was responsible. To the manager, um would this um um. Look, when they look at this, would they be able to give us, like, you could do this in the last five to ten years? Or you could replace the whole thing? Would we be able to get that? I've just heard it throwed around, nothing in firm by any means, but. Uh potential like town hall or the town or the block, that sort of thing, and I think. To have just one answer where it's replace it all, um would we be able to get like. Like, I guess, the spectrum of what could be done?
Uh yes, through the mayor, we can definitely look at uh some kind of phased approach for repairs um with consideration that. Uh you know, of the future of the, of the clock tower itself.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? I have a question, so, okay, so I, I need to try and get some history, so my understanding is there's three to four layers of bread. Especially around the bottom, so I think that that's, like, forms a structural part of the clock tower, which we referred to. Do um, has anyone looked at original drawings? Does anybody have the original drawings of the clock tower?
Uh through you. Through you, mayor, I have not uh had access to that, but I did see in the more. In the twenty nineteen report, there was a, a little bit of a drawing, so we, I'm assuming we have it somewhere. It's just a matter of digging it up. To confirm.
Okay, well, I guess reach out to me because I know where one's available. Um the brick is also not original brick, so this, that was new brick when the tower was put together. It wasn't the original brick from the post office. Um the, I guess my concern with highway consultant is. The fact that it's getting water and it's freezing in thaw, right? Because that building's not heating. And um it's also, that works not repairable. Like, I walked around that tower and especially on the south side of that metro, it's. You can, you can't even turn that brick around because there's not much left to it anymore. Um and I think what, like, Mason Reed. I, I know what the words are about, but you're not just gonna fix a section because eventually the whole thing is gonna do that, right? And what they're saying is, you have a bigger project. So then at some point, do we decide, is brick the best option? Or should we be looking at a different facade, maybe partly the, um councillor Spencer was alluding. Partly what, um, councillor Spencer was alluding to, is maybe we have different options, right, maybe we need to redesign it. Um, I think all of this council is committed, um, to doing that, but there's, obviously, there's kind of like a big price plan in here, um, associated with it, but. What exactly is this seven thousand going to tell us, like, are we gonna get options? For potentially a different facade, I know we have an individual in the B I A, um, court, designs facades. Um, that could also have some input, um, or are. We looking to solve the problem? I was also told. That at some point at time, there were recommendations that the brick should have been sealed, whether that came to the road degree club in town, I don't know. Um, we have to look into the history of that, um, but it was never done, so, um. You know, I, I don't know what to say, is just re-bricking it gonna be the answer, because probably somewhere down the road, we potentially may have the same problem. Or the brick comes to be sealed, but it's going to need new brick, the reality is that brick is, was not usable. It's not a matter of turning it around and use one. Um, there's definitely a problem, and it could be the brick is soft, clay and floors, so for the seven thousand. Are we gonna have any options, maybe like a redesign of it, or a different facade, there's a lot of new facades that are available on the market, um. So that's my question.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor, um, the seven thousand dollars was just for, uh, an, an. Engineering study for the masonry, um, for additional facade changes, you know, that kind of. Um, you know, looking at other possibilities of finishes on the exterior, uh, we might incur additional costs, um, so. It, it's tough to say, I think we could likely do it for the seven thousand, but. Might be some additional costs there.
I guess my concern is, like, if the report comes back, I mean, water's getting in the brick or whatever, all the brick comes, has to come off, we need to get new brick, whatever. Um, but I, I just think council should have some options and moving forward. Um, you know, I guess they determined what the issue is. Might just be bad soft brick, that's picking up. But, um, once that's determined, then. Before anything goes forward, will there be something coming back to council? So then council could. You know, potentially look at options or give directions for options.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, that's definitely a possibility, if, if you got, if council would like to, uh, have an, an additional report, uh, we can do that for you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, there are any further questions? Councilor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we're due to, to, um. So the mission we've got with that is going on, where they, they have any suggestions without us having to go spend seven thousand dollars, I mean, this is what they do for a living. They also must know what to do, if they not give us any options without us having to go spend more money.
Through you, Madam Mary, um. They, they did have some options, uh, I think a lot of it was off the record, um, at the end of the day, I don't. Believe that we could do this without additional study, uh, like I said, it is part of the structure of the building, it's not just the. It's not just a brick veneer facade, facade, it is part of the structural, so we need to confirm that the structural is good before we can, um, proceed.
Any further questions? Yeah, I guess that probably lines three to four layers deep. Um, because it is, it is part of the structure, but I was also told it's very stupid today as well, but, um, anyways. I, I still think that staff should reach out in the original drawings to, to take a look, um, and the person like to determine the. The integrity of the structure might be those anyways, but. Anyways, deputy mayor, any further questions? If not, deputy mayor, there's no issue.
The resolution has agreed, spend seven thousand in, uh, uh, transfers, the unused portion thirty eight, so it's, uh, spent, you know. Remove myself, second by council Parsons, and report R C P twenty five dash zero six five, title, clock tower masonry repair study, we received the information. Part B, that council approves the use of seven thousand from capital project. Four two four, which is a clock tower masonry week repair. To complete an engineering study of the compromised exterior masonry of the clock tower, and part C. That finance staff be directed to transfer the unused thirty eight thousand from capital project. Number four two four into facilities capital reserve.
Just kind of, any comments or questions? Well, my question would be is why, why would we transfer the unused map, because we're gonna need repairs anyways, so why does the project sit on the box with the money earmarked for that specific project?
Uh, through the mayor, I will defer to finance, hoping I can get assistance on this.
My thought, sorry, I believe that the twenty twenty six budget. Uh, would including a, a grand project, uh, will basically take the. The results of the study and then it would be part of the twenty six budget, uh, project. Not sure if the, the intent is for the study to be completed and then for the work to be finalized. Before the end of this year, if so, then yes, project four. Two four should remain, this, this was just saying, um, basically instead of canceling four to four for twenty five. They wanted to use a portion for this engineering study, to balance to make the reserve, the whole, the construction project, which would have been said. Or directly, maybe, based on them.
Like, to me, it looks like we're transferring from project four two four to the general facilities, capital, capital reserve. That that money is not staying here, or probably for, and to my point being, when, whether this happens immediately, and then what if council wants to look at some different options for this guy? If that money was still in project four two four, council could use that.
Again, we, yeah, so, um. Right now, this project four two four is, is a, was a budget of three thousand five thousand dollars, um. Obviously, today has just been including the seven thousand of that, with the remainder that, that would be available from the reserve. Then be reused for the microjet in the future, can we fund it from that, please?
Uh, yes, through you, Madam Mayor, just some additional information, uh, some of the quotes that we received this year. The remaining thirty eight thousand will not be enough to. For, if we're looking at kind of the full replacement, which I, I think will likely be the outcome of the report.
Okay, and how does this come back to council, like, this is nothing inherent versus that, if you're on soul, once this report is done. So like, what's the next step? It's just, it's just funding the budget? Or this seven thousand is gonna determine what the repairs are, without council thinking about it? I just need to know how this is gonna come back to council with consideration.
Uh. Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, we can, we will do a report, once we have the finding of the studies and. Um, some options, uh, with some pricings included, we can bring that back, it likely won't be till the new year, but happy to do so.
Um, to you, Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if there are, maybe we can just, uh, and bring your report back to council with the findings, um, you know, from. Study, and then I know that thirty thousand dollars, I went to, two hundred thousand dollars, if you choose five, just kind of based on, well, that's a, we add to the, the, for, then. At first, I was twenty six, and that will, you know, five hundred percent.
As, um, we're already doing the fatting, we'll kind of select it.
Yeah, right at the end, where it says, and, and report to council, both the results, so it's, we, we will.
Is it seven years, we're finally, yeah, understood. Seven years. Okay, thank you. All right, so we just added that, we get the report back once this, um, seven thousand, this engineering part of it. Okay, any further comments? Councilor, sir.
Just for clarification, are we going to be using also our engineer to look over this? I'm starting with, I'm having engineers, we're bringing people. To do this, and we can work with these masonry areas and make this work, like, I'm, I have a lot of properties, and I have lots, and I, and I don't know exactly what they mentioned. And the masonry's know what you're doing, like, this is their job, I'm, I'm struggling, just spending seven thousand dollars, even though we have engineers in our department.
I think the issue that Adam alluded to is that. Like, it's, like, if it's three or four layers, the, if the brick. Is part of the structure, it's not like there's a metal frame in there, yeah, it's just the frame. So we need to, obviously, for safety reasons, check the structural integrity, but I think that, that actions were, we're going with this. Okay, but it is going to come to council, all right, any further comments? Those in favor? Host, care. Park bench donation, um, Adams, since you're on here, is there anything about to highlight from this report?
Through you, Madam Mayor, um, not, not much to add, it is a good news story, I feel, um, and, yeah, hopefully, we can. Go ahead and, and work with our community partner here and, and get a bench installed in the park. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, my parents all? Guess we should be thanking the Ellen for her family, for joining the bench. Councillor, just some questions, councillor Parsons.
With my person, second by councillor, the man in the report, R C P twenty five sixty seven, have a park bench donation. Glendale Park, we received this information.
Thank you. Comments, those in favor? Harry, thank you, Adam, for attending tonight, consideration, uh, advisory, hence, councillor Lucy, that's Lucy.
When I move myself, second by councillor Parker, the council received all the advisory committee minutes, this is completion. Recreation in sports, advisory committee minutes, October second, twenty twenty five. Social Airport Advisory Committee Minutes, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and Community Healthcare Advisory Committee Minutes, November fourth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions regarding any, if I ask anything to this? Seeing none, those in favor? Harry, are there any notice of motion? You have, I'm just asking by council numbers first, okay, I'm gonna leave the chair, but I know what you're doing there.
Thank you, so I'm in the chair right now, so I'm gonna ask the questions, are there any notices of motion? Mayor, your base.
Thank you. That staff, please report back to council when they very brief report in relation to the town prior. The report should include the date of hire, the last time compensation was reviewed, the typical renovation by a few surrounding communities, and the volume that governs this system.
Well, again, that's a notice of motion, you have a motion, you know, and a notice of motion, just, we called it. Uh, so that will turn the chair back to.
With my sounds, anybody who's, there was Harry, uh, the following dialogue, we grant for, for second, third, and final reading, the mayor and clerk B, editor, hereby authorized. To sign the same, place, there, seal there on two, file on twenty twenty five dash zero nine three, twenty twenty five dash zero nine four, twenty twenty five dash zero nine five, twenty twenty five dash zero nine seven, twenty twenty five dash zero nine eight, twenty twenty five dash zero nine nine. Twenty twenty five dash one hundred, twenty twenty five dash one oh one, and twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Any comments and questions with council, for violence, those in favor, Harry, have been in the front side.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we got my sound, and that's a, that's a answer, that's the file on twenty twenty five dash zero nine six. Different firm is continuing the council meeting on Monday, the number ten, twenty twenty five, you write the first, second, third, and final reading, and that's the mayor's third P. Their here product authorized, sign today, replace the garbage, get over it. Thank you.
Those in favor? Here, items of public interest, deputy mayor?
If I can start, I just want to say Christmas is coming, there's nothing that I can think of that's more romantic than giving to somebody a bag of cake, or fifty two of them for Christmas. So my question to you as our Oxford County representative, if I buy fifty two for my loved one for the stocking for Christmas, that's a real surprise. Are they good into twenty twenty six?
Yes, they are.
Thank you, that's all I would. So, there it all, it's, you, that's, you're inspiring, good cheer now, I say that's it.
Well, there's some, so I can say, um, uh, Madam Kirk and councillor Parsons, and the staff attended the Oxford Safe and Well Summit on Friday afternoon. Uh, a lot of community leaders there, a few hospitals, health teams, food banks, shelters, uh, the network organizations. Um, looking at the areas versus stable or good communities, such as addiction with hopefulnessness, and I can't speak for everyone, um, but I found it inspiring. Um, and it was nice to see so many community leaders coming together to collaborate, brainstorm, and think that. Um, also looking forward to seeing one of the optimist clubs, and post craze, uh, this kind of Saturday at six, and. I've had a few people ask me where the rent is, and it's posted on the Optimist, um, Facebook page, hopefully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's snow time, and the snow's coming, and we shall be happy, but remember, if you see snow, go slow, if you see ice, think twice, thank you.
Stay along the same lines as councillor Rose, I, just a reminder to the public that starting November fifteenth, March thirty first, there is no on-street parking between two A M and six A M. Also, there is snow, hey, turn up, or on the street, make it easy on the snow, blah, 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 writers, uh, because if they go around, it does create some driving hazards for people, so, uh, please be cautious, uh, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to provide an update on this question, so. I think I've been shared. So I look at the budget for this year, and I noticed that, uh, the pairs included, they're in town, and they need to, we need to, so. Uh, the in-town, though, actually, we get some more, we tried it, the issues that are actually there is paid, uh, already for the in-town. However, for the inter-community, it was probably five thousand more this year. But, um, it looked at the transaction, there is about thirteen thousand dollars of the D K S that were refunded, because their service stopped, but sometimes rejected, and then now that we've seen, like, in the face, one, one, so.
Thank you very much, yes, thanks.
Yes, thank you, mayor, I do a couple of items to public interest, just one, and note that a couple of events that are coming up, the Thursday, we have our all. Uh, business service pop-up, which brings, uh, organizations that's, where businesses, uh, start on, install businesses, and definitely. Um, as council's aware, they're holding this for a number of years now, and they should be, be vibrant attraction. In the time of a little bit of economic uncertainty, it's could just see more and more opportunities. Uh, that, I know that I've been contacted by many on various, but last little bit as well, looking to start up a great business, so this is a good thing. Uh, it's taking place, uh, in central town center mall, and for this Thursday, uh, the boys, yeah, of the register, people can also register, we'll run one sessions, with some of the, uh, leaders who are there. And then the other event, uh, it's more meant that, uh, run by our multi-service center, but they're holding this, uh, I guess next Tuesday, so the eighteenth, November eighteenth. An event at Glendale High School called Trigger the Trade, and really to introduce young people and students to trade in the ops and the trades and the various, uh, occupations that they have, in Josephburg. So a great event to raise, raise awareness, I'm sorry, uh, with teenagers in high school, and build some great jobs, and do that, so just moving, uh, that to those attention quickly.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, so ice that you don't have to think twice about is our arena, we have a free state on Sunday, November sixteenth. Um, one fifteen to two forty five, so please do come out with your family and enjoy a free state, and there are other free states coming up, um, that, if you do like, I'm, 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 I'm. Thank you. So through you, Madam Mayor, to the councillor, um, the outdoor ring is typically December versus our target, um, it does depend on whether, of course, but our goal is to get a, ready for the community for December first, thank you.
So I'll take reading the forecast this week. There's a museum.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just a reminder for the members, it's the day tomorrow, there's a silent walk that begins at ten thirty. Um, it's at the vet, starts with the Veterans Memorial Trail and comes downtown to the Sematath. And the ceremony at the Sematath is ten forty five. Councillor Spencer mentioned the Optimist Santa Ray and also council would like to. Thank Chef's Bakery for donating forty five hundred copies. Um, that will be going on the frames. Um, also, as your council councillor, you'll be getting the budget process this week on. The county budget and the proposed budget and no discussion accounting is overselling. So I'm, I'm just working my way through it, but. Um, and I guess we'll head to a German.
Yes, there was requiring various town offices tomorrow, they're open.
No, town offices are open. Thank you. Uh, councillor Spencer.
One more, it's asked by councillor, Deputy Mayor Barron, so council meeting November tenth. Two twenty four, be assured that eight to twenty two.
Thank you, those in favor? Here.